We're live.
Okay, great. Well, we will call this meeting of the Grand Murray Planning Commission to order. We are only missing Ben Peters and I assume he's not coming in at this point?
I thought he was gonna come and sit out, but uh maybe I missed him.
Okay, no, 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 no big deal. But we'll just continue on. We have our agenda before us. The minutes are now attached. So we're missing the four and we have the addition for the bristen variance that we got as well. So I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
It's all moved.
Same.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, great. So the bristen variance is up first, but seeing that he is not here, but he may come. I'm gonna suggest that we flip it and go ahead with the Bullington variance if that will satisfy everybody here. I don't know if we need a motion for that, but it's fair. Um, and okay, and with that said, would anybody like to come up and speak to us about this variance request?
Sure.
Yeah.
Unless you'd rather.
Okay. Yeah.
Sure.
You can pull up another chair. There's room for two.
That's right. That's why we often have two people up there. But go ahead, just say your name.
Okay. Uh, Thomas Bullington, fifteen eighty-five Tierney Drive, Hastings, Minnesota. And we are here for our variance on our lot that we are in the process of purchasing. Out there on Highway five, I believe, or Highway seven on Fifth Street, Fifth Avenue. And basically what we were, what to know from Mr. Roth is that we needed a variance to be able to construct a property on the, on the lot because it was too skinny. And because we're not gonna have municipal sewer, we're having a septic and a well on the property. And so we've attached the map of that where basically the structure would go as well as the well and the septic that we are planning on building. This will be a year-round residence for us to live here in Grand Murray. Looking forward to that. And I could stand for any questions.
Alright. We did get one comment that I'll have Patrick read now for us. So we can have that in the record too and then we'll have questions.
This comment is from Karen Christensen. My name is Karen Christensen and I live on the property west of proposed building site and own the vacant lot south of my home. Tom and Shuro Bullington are requesting a variance of the minimum lot size requirements for residential property not connected to city sewer. Why are they unable to connect to city sewer? Question mark. The lot is a hundred and thirty-four feet wide, which is almost half the required amount, and three hundred and fifty-nine feet deep. And the minimum lot size is two hundred feet wide and three hundred and fifty feet deep. I have a few concerns to be addressed. The required lot, the required width of the lot size is two hundred feet compared to the current, compared to the property's current a hundred and thirty-four feet. That's a substantial difference between the two. I'm also concerned about the potential septic tank placement. The land south of my home is designated as delineated wetlands. I do not know if the lot is currently designated as delineated wetlands or if a reevaluation has been done in the last few years. I've lived here since twenty eighteen and every year the amount of water that accumulates in that wetland area has only increased. What used to be a creek turns into a pond and fast-growing river when it rains and in the spring when the snow melts. As for the mound area placement, I'm concerned that the location to my dwelling is a little too close. I know it meets the required distance from property lines and my septic system. My concern is the, is during the building phase. I'm concerned that the use of heavy equipment so close to existing structures could impact the integrity of the asphalt driveway. Possible damage to septic, to existing septic and retaining wall off the garage. Problems come up and guarantees cannot be made that my property would not be negatively affected with such a large variance. Thank you for your consideration of my concerns. Sincerely, Karen Christensen, twelve thirty, West Fifth Street.
Okay, and I don't know if Mike Roth shared this with you, but looking at the lot dimensions around this property, that for instance Karen Christensen right next door is actually just about the same width as this property. And in fact is a little bit, and not as deep as this property is. So that's something for your, for your knowledge.
And when was that built and when did the zoning change?
Yeah, and I don't know that answer to that, but you know, at least in terms of when we start to think about, sorry, kinda jumping ahead here, but when we're considering like, does it fit into the character of the neighborhood? You know, is this unusual and to what degree is it unusual?
Well, I know that house I used to babysit when I was thirteen years old, so.
So, there you go.
It's quite old.
Okay. So that.
Been there for a while.
Been there for a while, so the zoning wasn't really.
So that's what I'm wondering. I mean, you have to take that into consideration.
Yeah, for sure. No, I.
Rules change, so.
They certainly do. They certainly do.
Are they hooked up to?
Yeah, that's right. You're right.
Twenty-five years ago. We had these zoning, yeah. But anyway, sorry. Any questions for, for Tom or more, more investigation or?
I do have a map of where the wetlands are located in relation to what our property would be. My understanding also is that, you know, the wetlands are, are pretty well set to the south of where we would be, where we would be building the structure. And the professional that we had come out and look at the, where the septic mound would be. You know, this is something where we wanna be a good neighbor. We're new to the community. And we wanna be a good neighbor to Mrs. Christensen very much. And so that's, you know, this is something where if we can determine where the, if a septic system can be somewhere, somewhere else on the property, that would be more agreeable to Mrs. Christensen. That would be fine. That'd be acceptable to us. I'm not a septic expert, so I'm relying on a septic person to tell me kind of approximately where it would go as well as the well. And our structure could be built elsewhere on the property as well. If I can just submit for the record where the, what ideas I outline, where the wetlands would be in relation to where our home would be.
Do you want to actually move it to Anton and?
So it's outlining green there?
So that's, that's kind of where that is. And concurrently with that, the question that we have is, is you may under, as you may see from the property, the plant drawing. If I can show the commissioner.
There you.
This?
Okay.
So this is the Christensen household here.
Yep.
Are you guys moving over?
Yeah, ours would be here and about where, I'm sorry. So this is where.
It's a family there.
So the Christiansen's own this parcel of land right here, which is where we would need a right-of-way variance to have a driveway to access our property here. Otherwise, there's no way we can get on their property without we would be on their property. So we need just a gravel driveway to get onto our property here. I think it's a twelfth street right-of-way and we'd be able to access it from here. Ours goes all the way down. It's too flat, but basically it's here. This is the, the fourth street.
Yep.
And then this here and then this little bit down here, so this whole thing would be ours. But as you can see from the wetlands, we wanna make sure to preserve the integrity of the wetlands and that's why we had to look at. So really it kind of leaves us to about in here where we could actually put the buildings. And we just need to be able to access that from here. So we plan on preserving this and making sure it's, it just, it meets the integrity of the environment.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, very good.
Okay.
Who did the wetland delineate?
These guys.
I have the.
CK Wetland Services, who did the delineation.
I believe so. And our Realtor was unable to be here tonight, but and I can find out that information for you, but basically it's in one of the emails I've received from her. But they were quite familiar with the wetland delineation. I believe that might be on the Cook County website or somewhere online where they basically say, okay, here's the wetlands in this area. So.
Okay.
But we want, we don't wanna mess with that at all, so we're kind of in this little box of where we can build. And we'll definitely, and we can definitely take another look at where the septic would be. We plan to do that next year as well as the driveway and the well.
Okay.
Prior to purchase, prior to actually building the structure, so.
Yeah.
But we wanna be a good neighbors to the Christiansens.
Yeah, for sure. Okay.
I have a question. So you are working with somebody that's designed the septic where it should go?
Correct, correct.
And who is that? And were there soil borings done?
Yes. Let's see here. And forgive me for not being prepared to tell you exactly who did this.
Yep.
Someone that does a lot of these projects up here and let me, if you bear with me. Oh, well-drilling information, McKeever. Let's see here. Since we don't have the other person here, I'm gonna ask for your patience.
Oh, yeah.
We're finding exactly who did that for us. Okay, so McKeever, Don McKeever was the, the well. Can you, where that would go? Let me see if. Just in my email here. Or Mackiver, I'm sorry, if that's.
McKeever.
McKeever, correct, okay.
I was just curious, my, part of my reason for asking is because then this has to go to the county for approval.
They're gonna, they'll have to, yeah, I mean, we can.
We can say.
But they're the ones, and they, you have to designate two septic sites. And I'm concerned, I mean, we might as well know this right now. Are there two sites available on this little piece of land that's already not, doesn't meet requirements, so it's just a concern. And I wondered who did it and if they told you that.
Okay. From the best of my recollection here, it looks like Tim Mackey.
Tim Mackey?
In Mackey.
I didn't know he did that.
In my notes here. And again, I'm just trying to find the correct emails that came across. So let me look at that, yeah.
Not, not the one I was thinking of, okay.
Okay.
Changed businesses.
I think though, we're just thinking about our own piece of the puzzle, still really.
Well, I think that's potentially part of why, I mean, I think, to me, I see, when I see, like I, when you see that size requirement called out. Right, I mean, there's parcels that have been subdivided throughout the county, right? That are one acre and a half, right? Properties and they have two septic sites on them, right? Like it, it can happen. You can find that, I think. I don't understand why, what I understand is like if they're buying both the lot in question, that eighty-three oh nine zero zero one zero, but also the south side and basically all the way from Fifth, all the way down to Third, the right-of-way on Third. How come? I mean, isn't that technically contiguous or not contiguous because the road interrupts it? If it was an alley interrupting it, right? So if they were to buy the other side of where their driveway's gonna go, right? If they were to buy that parcel and the one next to it, that would be, that is considered contiguous one parcel number. So I don't know if the.
Uh, 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 I see.
I don't know if the road right-of-way, the county or the high, the city's, right? Property interrupting that.
Okay.
Trying to think how that works.
Okay.
If they classify it as, so, right, cause then all of a sudden now we've got not just, right? This block, right, between the seven and Fourth. But we actually have from seven all the way down to Third as far as depth goes. And so now what does that do for minimum lot size? Yes, we still might need a variance for the width side of it.
But then overall.
But then overall, and I don't know, so that's maybe.
Yeah, and I.
And maybe it doesn't matter, but.
So I know, yeah, so Tim Mackey did the driveway.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Scott Robinson did the septic for us.
Okay.
The placement of that in this, in this map that you have attached to your documents, so.
Okay.
Apologies for the.
No, no, no.
Delay there, but there's a lot of new names to us, so we're just.
Oh, yeah.
Train.
For sure. Yeah, I think, you know, when I, cause I was curious about like, why this size? Like, how did we come up with these dimensions? And so when I was asking about that, apparently there, there was no concrete, like this is why it has to be these dimensions. I couldn't find anything written. And I asked Mike about it and he said he didn't know where that number came from. Cause he said there are plenty of parcels that are larger than this that you won't, won't be able to build on because there won't be, you won't have the, the kind of delineation you need in terms of having your septic and everything. And there are some that are smaller that you can. So I'm not really sure where the, where these dimensions came from, so. In my mind, it seems a little arbitrary.
It seems like an odd size because it would almost mean that you'd have to have a full city block. You couldn't own like this, like a half a city block and, right? Everything is one thirty-five in width or, right? This might say one thirty-four, but I thought one thirty-five is what all of our.
Yeah. So.
So that, I'm not saying we, in the, remember in the rehash of minimum lot size, just for like being able to build, right? You would have had to have had, I think, a minimum of two city lots in order to build, right? Under the old rules.
Yeah.
When we changed that to be smaller, it actually was sized based on, if you own an individual city lot, as most of them are laid out at fifty feet or forty, right? Fifty feet by one thirty-five, you'd be able to hit that five thousand square foot number, right?
Right, yeah.
And so who knows if this is, right? Something from the boilerplate stuff. Yeah, I mean.
So, oh, you're saying that that influenced how this became the rule?
I mean, I think this might just have been something, that arbitrary number of, because there is really nothing that's two hundred wide, like that doesn't really exist in the city unless you're talking about somebody that owns both sides of an alley, right?
Yeah.
Avenue facing.
Yeah, so I think we might need to fix this one, but.
Yeah, so I mean, I, my, personally, I, I guess I'll just get to it. I don't, I don't necessarily see. I don't, I don't see any problems. I mean, obviously, like if you look at what's happening adjacent, right? There's already a house, but then you continue further out seven, north side of seven. Like that is the type of development that is happening, probably similar sized properties.
Yeah.
And clearly residential, clearly, right? I mean, it, so it fits that like criteria of what we're trying to assess. My biggest, you know, and it's not you guys, my biggest thing is I just hate seeing like city properties. Like that's, that's ten lots, ten city lots, right? And that's, you know, not without lots of money and lots of legwork and effort. That's ten houses, right?
Right.
And so that, that's, and again, this is kind of right on, it's on the outskirts. It isn't like the middle, right? I mean, I've, so that's, that's more of a, like a personal, like reflection on my, my feelings on it. I hate the idea of, you know, it's just like not, right? There is no city utilities there right now, right?
So we have to.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I, it's a major deal.
Build our own sewer.
Yeah.
Eight hundred feet away.
Yeah.
Did you?
Eight hundred feet away.
Eight hundred.
Do you know that? Cause I, I asked yesterday and I didn't get a number.
Oh, I, I asked Mike eventually and said, he said it's between eight hundred and a thousand, depending which way you go, but.
Well, I was looking at the lower lot too though, because.
Okay.
That's.
There's two lots.
Well, if you went, yeah, but.
So, and if you go from.
But now they're running, but then now they're running a thousand feet. Because they, there's nothing here. The thing that's below this is the Northern Star or, right, or Homestead.
It's Homestead right there.
Okay.
So I'm like, we made, we made Hamilton's bring, bring it up to here. And I'm like, well.
Yeah.
What if you bring it here?
Yeah.
And build here instead of, I, I was just looking at all the options.
Right, right.
And that's why, and I will put on the record one more time that as a planning commission member, it is very difficult at times to make decisions without a map of where our current city utilities are.
Okay.
And knowing exactly where things are, so.
Cause it is, it is in Fourth Street too, but it's.
Yeah.
But I don't know where it stops at Fourth Street.
You, you can drive down there and you can drive to the end and there's a fire hydrant. And I'm like, well, does that mean there's sewer here too? I don't, I don't know because I don't have a map.
Yeah.
And I will ask the city council again to get their act together on that.
Well, it would be, it is helpful, right? I mean, again, it's, it's a different ask than what you guys are doing.
Yes.
Yep.
But there is also something to be said of like, well, if you guys are buying all of that and now you know you could actually tie in the sewer water and do you, do you need an extra seven hundred and fifty feet all the way down to the Homestead as yours? Like, right, like there's a turnover potential in that, right? It's like, yeah, it's gonna cost X. I mean, they're not, I know, they're not giving septics away, right? Those are not inexpensive.
We're about thirty thousand dollars is what the estimate was for the septic.
That's, that's really good.
Substantial.
Oh, that's, so that's, that, I don't, I haven't seen a septic for thirty thousand dollars in at least four years.
It's gotta be gold-plated or something. I'm not sure, but.
No, I'm saying that's, that's half the price of what.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good one. Okay, good. Keep that one.
Yep, sign that quote.
Yeah.
Very good. Very good.
No, no, no.
No, they won't be.
Certainly I understand where you're at. I was on Hastings Planning Commission for six years and I absolutely understand you're, you're dealing with precedent. It's nothing about us. It's, it's precedent for the community development of your, of your city. And you wanna make sure if, if you're gonna give Tom and Cheryl something, then, you know, Bob and Susan down the road are gonna get something and then, you know, it's, so you have to set that precedent. I guess, you know, if we, if we could tie into this, into the sewer, we would. I don't think we're gonna be able to afford a thousand feet of pipe to be able to do that ourselves.
Right.
So I mean, it's, it's that, so in order to use the, the property, we need a septic and a well. And we actually, and we need the variance for the right-of-way driveway. And that's, and that's basically it or.
You need the variance from the city?
Well.
You shouldn't need a variance past their property because that, coming off of seven at that right-of-way, that's the city right-of-way.
Yeah.
So you just need to be able to build.
We need permission.
Permission to build that.
Uh, and Mr. Roth indicated that, that there's not an application for that. He just said the builders need to provide a grading plan for the proposed driveway.
Yeah.
Which is less.
More administrative.
That's what that was.
Yeah. So, and you know, we're supposed to close on this property next week. So that if, you know, if we need to, and I know the specs, the people that are current owners have signed the paperwork already. But again, no pressure on, on you guys. If we need to delay this or if you need to go back and review this again, you know, we, we wanna move here. We wanna buy this land. We wanna be members of the community and retire here. So we're, we wanna come if you, if you let us.
There we go.
And we would love to, and we wanna be a good neighbor to Ms. Christiansen, so.
For sure. Yeah. Go ahead.
No, I've had my turn. I, I'll wait for my second turn. You go ahead.
I, I mean, I agree that the, the measurements seem arbitrary. As far as the character of the, the neighborhood is concerned, I'm guessing from what we've been talking about needing a thousand feet of pipe, that the other houses around them are also not connected to the city.
Right.
They have septic systems of their own. I see no reason not to extend that to new people based off of a rule we can't comprehend.
Okay.
Is, is that a motion you're making?
Okay.
Uh, not yet. I wanted to know first.
Thank you, cause I'm, I need two times, you know that.
Discussion after motion, but okay.
And this is not personal to you and I welcome you to our community, but. My other concern is, not only is it.
On this one?
Yes.
Where is it?
This piece, when you look, so this is. There's all of these lots in between. Guess what? Next week, it's next month, month after? And where's that point where we say, this doesn't make sense and we're not supporting our goal of developing more housing? Because we're going to make sure.
Here's the, this is from OnX, the hunting app. I'm not a hunter, but here's where it is. So, you know, and it has our name and stuff like that, so just if you need some, another reference.
Yeah.
Well, I think there's, is this, there's another chunk of stuff for sale right now or is this part of that? Cause just to the south of Fourth, and I think actually to the east, there is a hodgepodge of things that.
That are happening.
And I don't, yeah.
I believe I saw something, but you know, I just.
I mean, that's, that's, I think goes back to what my point was of, right? So for, right, we know right here, there's water right here, right?
Yeah.
There's, which is not that far. But this is the, it's, yeah, it's a, it is a challenge because if there is. It's, it's a whole, it's a whole litany of issues, right? So this, this, this road is a project that happened and they had dump trucks and they're like, I don't know, just dump it off the end of Fourth Street, right? So this all just got put in, so there's no culverts underneath any of this stuff. So what happened is all of this that probably used to look like this, all looks like this. If you zoom in on that, on his OnX map or on a satellite, all this is just birch, everything that's fallen down because the hydrology changed because this was dammed off. If you go down here, Third Street, that was the main highway, right? That was the main way into town, which is why we have these silly north-south lots down here at the bottom, the twenty-five and fifty-footers. So this was the old main drag, so that's the trail, right? Above Homestead, above Northern Star. So those, in that old highway, that old roadbed, all, most, some of them have been fixed. Most of those culverts are collapsed. So again, you have this dam that crosses across the contour and takes everything that's coming down and backs it all up. So like this is, like it's, there's like, there's some upland and there's a piece of upland and the rest of it is wet, right? You're looking like here is this little tiny piece of upland on their site and then up here, but the rest of this, and it's not anybody's fault, but it's what makes, and so same here. This is really, really wet. For one, there's a giant culvert that comes across under the highway and just dumps water into this property.
Well.
It dumps it into the right-of-way, but because there is no sewer water in there, right? There could be, and it could be managed like right up across the highway. But it's, there's not, yeah, but this is like, it's.
No, I know, I know we're getting into it, but are you saying, I, I'm not visioning this. Where is this exactly?
That's the gravel, so if you come down Eighth and take your first right, that's Fourth Street.
On Fourth and come all the way down.
To the end.
To the end.
There's like a turnaround there. There's like a turnaround there.
Okay. Yeah, I mean.
So there's, there's a manhole in there, there's a manhole somewhere along here, but I don't remember where it stops, cause.
But there's, and there's a fire.
Block back and there's a hydrant.
Yeah.
Somewhere out there.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, yes, we need to put in the infrastructure.
This is, this is, I think to your point is like, okay, so we do this, we change the, we do a variance to allow this to happen on. According to the way we have things written substandard, right? Well, now we have somebody that buys all this and it totally fits the criteria and somebody just puts a house.
Yeah.
So now we lost ten, potentially another ten, and twenty more, right? Or even if you halved it and you did larger lots, city lots, right? I mean, that's, that's where, and it's not you guys, right, but it's like, and there's these areas on the periphery where the. Right north of the Gunflint where my, right? Same thing, there is right there and there is wetlands, but those wetlands are there because of. The Gunflint Trail that got put through there and dammed up by everything and turned it into wetland. And so that's, it's a really hard development side, if we're like being pushed to try and make things affordable and to make things developable. And then we're also like, again, it's not like there's a beaver swamp in the middle of something that we're talking about draining. Like it's, it's already decisions that were made by people in generations before us. That have impacted it to make it now with the rules that we have to follow. Which means burdensome costs both for proper, private property owners or for the city to try and deal with it. And then what happens is it's like, well, I guess it just makes sense to put one house on that and put a septic in. Because that is really inexpensive compared to expansion of infrastructure.
Yeah.
So, it's this, we have this philosophical thing every time this happens. But it's a, yeah, I.
I mean, in, in terms of anything that we can do in the short term, I mean, I'm not sure what the answer is, I mean.
Well, the, to me, I would say, I'd make a motion to approve this, to do that. And, and I would just say again, like, you're, what you're saying about like wanting to be part of the community and be here. Like as things happen around you, like, you know, maybe.
Come on the commission.
Coming, like, well, I mean. Be part, you could be part of, like, you know, again, that southern section, right, that southern block that you have that abuts third, I mean, who knows, right? You know, what's gonna happen in five years, ten years?
Right.
But if that is something that, you know, right, but, yeah, I don't know. I mean, it would be ultimately, I think, if there was even a cost, right, if somebody did that. And this, or the city decided we're gonna do that and add that extension, well, now all of a sudden you're gonna hit with a pretty big assessment. Because now you have city services of that lower property.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe it means you'd wanna sell it, but like, you know, the, I don't, I don't know. I, I guess I'd say, I'm, as things sit, I don't have any problem, I, again, I agree. I'm not Scott Robinson, Scott's really good at what he does as far as doing septic work, I mean, I see why it's sloped pitch the way it is to meet the contours. Cause that's the way a mountain system has to be. I would, you could ask the question again to address the neighbors' concerns, instead of being at the angle that it's presented at. If you brought it to the east, so it was more, cause the contours actually follow more due east-west, if you brought it directly kind of off of the road. Instead of off to the west slightly at that angle, it looks like it fit, again, I'm not a septic designer. But potentially contours work to do that, and then that would, you'd still, you'd still keep that hundred and thirty feet from your well. You'd still keep those separations from your stuff, but it would actually increase the distance from her well and it would increase the distance.
Yeah.
To her property line, so you'd use like.
Can you show me about where you're.
I mean, again, Scott will be like, oh, he can tell. If, mine's colored, it's easier.
Yeah.
Right, so if this is, you use this as your pivot point, right? And this is, right, you're still fine, but if this just, just swung, just swung, like if you look at the contours on your other map. The contours are this way, but then as it goes this way, the contours switch this way, so you could turn this potentially. Into, right, just move it over this way, which would mean instead of it being diagonal, it'd be more, a little bit more east-west orientation. And then that, I guess what I'm understanding, she's nervous about construction affecting her lot, she's nervous about septic. Affecting her property, while that would get us swung back over. And then I don't think that she would have any, I mean, she might still have concerns.
Yeah.
But it would be.
But, and, yeah, I mean, it's definitely, I mean, obviously it's not, we can't require that.
Yeah.
But.
And it could, the question could be asked, you know, that, that's what I would.
Yeah, we would just have to move our driveway a little bit farther to the south here to get. And not have it be like, cause it was gonna be basically, once we're past their land, we're just gonna like swing it in here.
Oh.
So, if we, you know, if you're fine with that right-of-way having a driveway on it.
Well, I don't.
That's where we don't know.
That's, yeah, I, I think that's.
How do we get that answered?
We are, I think, fine with, if, if the requirement is that you just have to show you have a grade cut that Tim did, the KTM, right?
Yeah, and that's not, that's an administrative thing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that Mike can clarify more for you.
Okay.
Um.
So we, you know, we just don't want to purchase the land and, and then not be able to access it.
Yeah, that would.
Yeah, no.
You know, we could drop in from a helicopter or something, but you know.
You could look at it.
No, you, I think you have, there's, there's, yeah, I mean, if, if, he, he's seen this?
He meaning.
Sorry, Mike Roth?
Yes, yeah, we send everything to the city.
If he saw this, then I would assume that that works with what they, what he wants to see.
Okay.
Right, and again, what that might do is whatever happens to the property to the east of you, now all of a sudden they might start using that driveway. But they have every right to do that because it's not on your property.
Correct.
It's on the city right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Can we, can we confirm that the, the city is okay with that, if that's with Mr. Roth?
Turning my mic some on the, uh, I would ch- check in with Mike tomorrow just to confirm that. My understanding is th- that might be possible, but there's also the possibility that this meeting is to make sure. That the planning commission and the city council would allow for this, so that we can, before we work on.
So you wanna. Driveway side of it?
Right.
So, yeah, I made my motion, I'd saying that we can, this is fine to put. Especially once we learn, like really the size, lot size acreage-wise, like if it's. I'm, I'm, I'd make a motion to approve them to be able to put a private septic on this property.
Okay, we.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Further discussion, second discussion, statements, okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good, so that.
Thank you.
Goes on, and yeah, just reach back out to Mike and what your next steps are.
Would this come back to council then, or would it be a?
I'm not sure.
Well, this'll go to the council.
Well, this will go to council, yes, we just approved.
Thank you, sir. And then when do they meet?
Uh, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday?
Okay.
Six thirty P M.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You've got his wetlands map.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Well, that gets us back to the, the Brison variance request.
I'd make a motion to approve the Brison variance request.
Really?
Yeah.
Just flat out.
It's a shipping container.
Second.
Oh.
Yeah. I mean, that's, it's a shipping container.
Can, can, just give you one second. Cause I'm thinking, I get where you're coming from, I just wanted to get like, cause the original, like how far it was from the lake. Made me feel like, oh, it's right next to the shed, it makes a lot of sense, it's just sitting there. And then when I got the second view where it's actually like on the water, I'm like, well, I just need to know a little more, like how big is it really?
Eight feet by twenty feet by eight feet.
It's not in there, it's not in there.
I know.
It doesn't?
I went down and asked.
Is it a twenty footer or is it a forty footer?
I think he said, I'm pretty sure he said twenty foot. And they originally thought right close to the water and I said, ooh, that doesn't look good. And then I, they talked about it and said, oh, no, you're, no, that isn't gonna be, it's gonna be next to the building.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, so the first one is real and the second one is wrong?
No, the, so.
It's not gonna be next to the water now, after all, is what they told me, it's next to the building.
Scott Fish House?
Yeah.
The.
So this pink drawing is correct.
That's the correct.
Yes.
So this is the correct one, okay, cause the other one had shown it, I guess that the, whatever the building is up above, I. Uh, showed it next to that building next to the, I guess.
Was discussed, Greg came in within like about forty-five minutes, wasn't even, and that's the correct.
So that's the correct one, right there, all right. And everybody is fine with that?
So not the orange one on our packet, the pink one.
The pink one.
The pink one, yeah.
I don't know if everybody's, I just made a motion, we can vote on it.
So, um. Does anybody else have any questions, so it's eight by eight by twenty, is that what you said, or what you believe to be true?
That's what I believe to be eight feet by twenty feet, yeah.
And it's to store fish?
Gear. Oh, just the gear.
It's all the gear that's underneath the, or the fisherman's daughter right now, it's open and it's all there.
Okay.
So they're just gonna put it in a container, which, I mean, I agree, I just had a couple of questions.
Okay.
Okay, we do have a motion, anybody for a second?
No, I already seconded.
Oh, you did, great, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 What about more discussion, you asked what?
Yeah, what were your concerns?
We had discussion, just we did it out of order.
I mean, I don't, yeah, whatever, we voted on it.
It's voted.
This is not in accordance with Robert's rules.
It's close.
So.
Bob's rules more than Robert's.
As a planning commission, are we going to have more? I would like more information about why.
About why that size?
The septic system sizes and.
Yeah.
Is there advice from the county of what they, I mean, I don't know. So maybe we need to get some information from septic people and environmental people. To give us advice of what.
Why, why that size?
If this is going to be a situation because the city refuses to extend their sewer and water lines, this is going to come up more.
We do extend them.
And so I would like to be prepared next time. I think we need to have a discussion.
When?
We have, I'm not saying, right, and you know when we do that, we do them when, you know, we've got a project, we know they wanna do it. Then that's when it happens, but it's not, that's been the way of it.
The city hasn't done it, private people have done it.
Right.
There's a difference.
And it's time to say the city needs to step up and be a partner with these developers. And not just leave it to the developers to extend our sewer and water lines.
All right, you, you're speaking to the converted, like, Ben and I have been talking about this a lot. And we just aren't, we can't get enough votes.
Council have the power to like create a plan to?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
To do that?
I mean, we can, I mean, we did do, I mean, I, I mean historically, you know, they, the city did like. What's that?
No, I want you to.
Hard time.
Well, of course you are, but no, 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 but we did, like, we did run all those lines up, you know, at the business park over by you. And that kinda thing, those were, you know, put in by the city.
Well, yeah, when they built the new Gunflint Trail.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So they, they did it and then.
But it's like, that's, that to me is the frustrating part, right, like, so when they reroute the Gunflint Trail, they put all that infrastructure in there. Like, the biggest thing to come out of that is obviously the Gunflint View, right, like that's huge that that had that. But ultimately, I think if the Gunflint Trail was still Fifth Avenue West, like the old days, right? Like, there would still, that, there would only been a couple of blocks to tie in that whole big apartment complex into where the infrastructure was down. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, but you look at from Fifth all the way to the Business Park, I mean, it's the same, it's this area that we talked about tonight. On the west side of town.
Yeah.
And that area on the north side of the Gunflint.
Yeah.
And that, that area has been below Creechville, right? Especially Broadway, North Broadway to the east over to the Business Park.
Yeah.
And that's like the black, the black weld of plat, whatever, that nineteen-ten. That's been platted as forty, you know, fifty-foot lots, like, like everything else below the school. But, you know, so again, like there was probably great expense to put all that infrastructure into the Gunflint Trail. When the Gunflint Trail was rerouted.
Mm-hmm.
Right, cause that's always thinking, oh, it costs so much, it costs so much, it's like, well, there was a big expense to do that, to put stormwater in. It's great, to put sewer and water in. But if you don't do anything, attach anything to that, then. You know, there's.
Oh, you mean like having them come off of there?
Places beside, before Gunflint View, which there's now however many apartments are in there, right, and a lot. But that got built fifteen years ago, and in that fifteen years, only four houses got hooked up to the infrastructure.
And it's.
Which is a lot of money for four houses, and again, that money seems much better spent if again, you put more money into north side of the Gunflint. Where all of that stuff no, east of Broadway is, there is four hundred single. You know, four hundred lots up there, you know, single city lots, maybe not four hundred, but pretty damn close.
Yeah, no, I, for sure, I mean, I, you know, definitely going towards that area is where I'm thinking we should break it out more. That would be my inclination, cause it just seems like it, like you're going down the street and it just stops, it's like.
Yeah.
We could probably keep going.
Well, again, it's, 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 it is expensive, but it, there's also an expense to not doing anything, right? And it's in who we can bring into the community, it's who we can, that, who can afford to live here, it's all of those things, right? So there's a negative, right, to it.
Yeah, and I think this is a great example of where had utilities been run down there. We'd have more.
We could have ten houses instead of one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I would just, when you give your report, next Tuesday or Wednesday, whatever day it is.
Yeah.
Um, again, say that the planning commission needs more information and we want to be.
Like the utility map.
Yeah, and to help give, we can't plan ahead in planning. If we don't have the basic information of where does that line stop?
We would be the planning commission, not the responding commission, right, responding to requests.
Yeah.
We're not the request commission or the planning commission, like we, like if, if indeed, whatever, you've been here longer than I have. Not much, though.
Yeah, I know, remember I'm only twenty-five.
But, yeah, right, I mean, yeah, it's like if, if we want to do what it is, again, why did they put infrastructure in the Gunflint Trail? If they didn't plan on tying into it?
Right. Right.
Uh, you know, why, why did the city spend that money? I don't know, but I'm assuming it's because they thought, hey, why did they build the aprons into that? Right, on each one of those on the north side where people pull over so they can go walking, right, like those are all roads that could be built. Why did that happen?
So, yeah.
If it was not gonna get, if there wasn't a plan for the future to, to tie into it all. And again, I don't think like, I don't think I made good use where, right, where I'm at, like my house is on six lots, that's ridiculous. Right, even the place that Hamilton built, I mean, that's great, there was a little bit of wet there, so they, but they have one house on five lots. You know, and they probably would have loved, right, to be able to tie in two places right there.
Right.
But if they decided to do two, now all of a sudden, they've gotta go right up Broadway, they've gotta put in eight, they, they've gotta do. The real infrastructure work that it takes.
Yeah.
And then it all of a sudden for private developer, private individuals gets to be very cost prohibitive. For hard to do.
Yeah.
So I think it's our job to push that and to understand what that looks like.
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, I, I feel like the, I mean, I, I especially like this example, just because I think it makes it clear the costs. The things we lose when we don't run the utilities out.
Yeah.
Cause it's gonna keep happening.
Yeah.
This is good.
And I don't, I don't know if there is enough, I've had probably four people call me about, I feel like it's not this one that these folks are talking about. But there's a whole kind of in that area, though.
Okay, like.
Between third and, third and fourth.
There's something going on back there when I drove it yesterday.
Oh.
I.
Yeah.
And so again, somebody's like, well, I don't wanna do any of that stuff. I just wanna put one house up. It's like, wait, so you're gonna buy all of this property? And then put a house and there's city right aways, right? Street right aways and avenue right aways intersecting this kind of plot. And I get it, cause it is pretty reasonably priced in comparison to other things. But then again, now you have a property that's taking up the space that could be. You know, it is expensive, but it's so much less expensive.
Yeah.
Than what it costs on an individual basis, right? If you had to go build ten septic systems. I mean, that's great that they got a thirty thousand dollar quote, but. I, you know.
Yeah, maybe they did.
Yeah, it's, and then what is that? I mean, again, we're also supposed to be like stewards of the environment, right? And like of, 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 so what is better for the environment? Is it to have individual? It's one thing if we're outside and for the most part, Far Three is the generally the smallest county size, right? Five acres sort of like lake lots, but like five acre, that Far Three size, five acre minimums. So there you, you put a house and a well, septic, private infrastructure, like, yeah, the land can probably handle that. Right? But if we're now talking about condensing and, and density. If it would, I think it would be a shame if you ended up with, you know, the place that we talked about tonight and potentially two or three other places. In what equates to maybe a total of five to six acres overall, and you have three to four places all on individual well and septic.
Yeah.
And probably environmentally, right? They can handle it, right? Septic systems are designed to be pretty, but. But it also is taking away. Any potential growth. We're not gonna annex in, we can't annex in south, right, right? We're land, we're, we're stuck and we can't really go north because we know what happens once we get above, right? I mean, that's parkland and we can't, that's hilly, it's all rock, like the guy that was here, how many meetings to try and build his resort up there? Right? I mean, we know that that's not practical and is expensive. So we have this, we have this finite resource. And I just, you know.
Yeah.
Not on, it's not, it's not exploiting it, right? But it's utilizing it.
Right. Yeah, I think the thing that always comes back is the, the money of it, like, how do we, how do we pay for that infrastructure? How do we make those dollars make sense? Cause you know, if we're gonna, you know, assess people for that when we put it in, I mean, even just small extensions we've done. People are not very happy about that, you know, about paying more.
But what would that be? Like if there was a grant, yeah, but it's because it's like this piecemeal approach. So like, yeah, Mike, oh yeah, it's gonna cost us a hundred grand to get this to you. Well, it doesn't really do any good for anybody if it's only serving that person. Like I can see where it's like, yeah, I'm just gonna put a well and septic in, cause it's gonna cost me fifty or sixty grand.
Right.
And I'm not paying for water and sewer in perpetuity, right? I'm not paying those costs. I'm paying for everything right now.
Right.
But if you, right, it's the like the, the value of scale, right? If we said, okay, we're gonna do a block of infrastructure. Well, that in theory serves both sides of the street.
Mm hmm.
And if you, you know, again, it's like, it would be developing, like what is the, what is the development and expansion plan? And maybe it never goes anywhere. I hope it does, but if we don't even have a plan on how we could foresee that happening. Then I don't know how we ever get away from what we had to talk about tonight.
Right.
If there isn't a plan of how we're gonna like, you know, the, even if it's like a visioning thing, I would be totally up for like having a couple. You guys would get really tired of me, I'm sure, but like, sitting down for a few hours to talk about like, okay, let's get that map like you're asking for, where stuff sits right now.
Yeah.
Let's look at, you know, ownership of property, right? We know the school owns all of that stuff north of the Gunflint. You know, and it's mixed on this area where we were talking tonight, mixed, you know, mixed private ownership. But the school doesn't want any of that. They have no interest in it.
Right.
Well, you know, but they, they have interest in partnering. I think you could probably get that from them. That they do have interest in building more houses so we get more families, so we get more people here, so the school stays strong.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
And it's not all single family. It's a combination of things. It's what's happening at Gunflint View, it's town homes, it's single family.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, and you know, we do have our, uh, visioning session coming up, you know, where we're gonna be talking about all that.
We do?
No, not we.
Well, we want it too.
Well, I know you want it too.
You tell the, the city council.
Bring that to the council.
I'm like, cause I'm like, cause we've talked about it before, we've wanted it to be, you know, up there, but.
I know, it, it, it is.
Can't make everybody go your way, but, but I mean, we can bring it up again.
Well, maybe we should each, we should write a letter from the planning commission to the city council and.
They're like, hey, guys.
We want this.
I think everybody, but.
Man, everybody wants.
Why have we been talking about it? I haven't been on for four years now, but I was on for eight years before that.
Yeah.
We talked about it. I wouldn't, I talked as much as I talked tonight about it. Not every meeting, but like, you know, it's like.
Right.
Right? Like, it's important, like we need to do it, like why can't we do it? It's like, oh, it costs so much money.
Well, yeah, so what during your eight years, what was the deal? Was, was that ultimately, did, did just keep getting?
Ah, it's, it's, it's expensive. And it just, well, other stuff came, right?
Sure, sure, other things, and I mean, that is part of, part of this, but I, I don't disagree with you and I really do feel like that is the job of the city. Is to start saying like, here's the direction we would like things to go. So.
Have we done? Like, I don't think, I don't think that in my time there, and I don't think that certainly in my time in the planning commission, which have overlapped, like, I don't think, I don't think I've ever seen. I've cert- I'd love that we have like, here's a replacement plan, right? So we can budget and we can get that stuff.
You mean like for the roads and utilities that we have already?
Yeah, that is obviously important and it's great. But I do think like we, there's a. It doesn't make sense if we're gonna push it, like push, it doesn't make, it's expensive, it's expensive, it's expensive. But there is. There's things out there, right? I mean, there's. You know, I, it's like federal government stuff, right?
Maybe.
Like there's infrastructure grants. There's infrastructure funding, which is like, yeah, well, that's still all our tax money. It's like, yeah, that's, that's true. But it's a much, much bigger pot, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, even I triple R stuff and deed, I mean, there is so many funding sources that are out there, I think. Especially coming into it as a city to request. I mean, look at what the school just did with the referendum. Right? It's kind of like a blessing it didn't pass last year because we all got a great thing and a better thing for half the price. Because of them working hard. I mean, it was not.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, yeah.
You know, cheering them along and going over and getting that ask, but I mean. So, right, so like. If that, if that's available for the school, it's available for housing. Right? And then you can put caveats potentially, cause again, if you're talking about an entity like the school district that owns the property. Versus I'm gonna put infrastructure in on privately owned property and hit you with these assessments. Like there must be, you know, then, then it gets difficult to be like, well, then I, you know, I don't wanna pay these assessments. I'm gonna try and sell these for as much money as possible, right? There's like the more capitalist take on it, but if we look at it in the. I don't know, there's, there's, yeah, E D A, Housing Authority, like, what, why, I don't know, what have they done? Have they done anything and like looked at like where infrastructure sits? Who's, who's our member on the E D A?
On the E D A, that is Tracy, I believe, is E D A right now. Yep.
And do we have an H R A member? Or is that, are the H, H R A, E D A kind of like a, I don't know what happened with that?
Yeah, I don't know what happened with that. I think they might be.
They're separate, well, they were separate. They haven't joined yet. I didn't know. I know there's now that they were talking about director situations.
Yeah.
Change. I haven't, I don't follow it anymore. But going back to what this development plan and where our potential is, we also have to think, yes, it's expensive, it's costly. There is, you know, other cities have gotten money for.
Yeah.
Infrastructure, so don't tell me grandma, I can't get it.
Right.
It's not easy, but then you can also have to think about the tax capacity aspect of it. We're gonna get one home out of here, two thousand square foot home to add to our tax base. We could have had ten. We could have had more people.
And even if you could only had two or three.
Yeah.
Because that's the, that's kind of the crazy thing, right? So if you're doing, if, if they said, all right, we're just gonna tie in. To, and they could, I mean, I don't know, because of the distance, they probably couldn't do it, but. If you're putting a single family, so I'll use the first one that I did and then like same, I think with Hamilton. Like they were able to go. Well, Hamilton, like it's four inch line out of that house right into and tied into the sewer, right? So there's no. And. Right? So then that's, that's easy. That's not anything crazy, but it's, as soon as you're doing multiples, right? Your, everything is different. It's, there's different spec that you have to follow. The engineers have to sign off on stuff. You have to have observation. Therefore costs go up. But it. Yeah, I don't know. I'm, I'm exhausted, but it's. I think, but I, I, I think that, but it, it's kind of, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a shame. It's not, it's not a shame. I think it's, it's not us, we're not doing our job if we're not. Looking at what that potential could be, even if it is really hard, if we don't have a plan, then how can we? You know, how could we ever turn anybody down? For that, how could we ever, how could?
I mean. Yes.
I'm gonna throw heck that call out here. Somebody says, hey, school, you know what? I got a bunch of money. I'm gonna buy all of this land north of the Gunflint Trail. Right? And they can run a driveway up one of those aprons and put, uh, they could put a. Eight hundred square foot house up there, but be surrounded by all of that. What do we have, what do we have in place to stop them from doing that right now? Nothing. I don't, I mean, cause they got, they meet the requirement for property size. If they can, or they might even just put a septic in it. They don't even have to tie in. But what do we, but it's in city limits, so we have no, right? Like I'm, like how do we, how would we, how could we stop that? We couldn't. We would have to say, yep, you can, as long as you can get the septic inspected and all that stuff done through the county, like you're good to go. And then we lose not the potential of two, five, ten, but we lose the potential of two hundred. Then we're screwed. Then there is nothing, very little that we can do to try and help.